So my name is Kira Kazanzas, I'll be your moderator. I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. I really hope you can understand me. If you can't, just, you know, say something. I am the CEO of Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits. We are an association of almost 300 nonprofit members. And we work to help develop the capacity of nonprofits so they in turn can help communities thrive and make positive change. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about what we're going to do. You already had, were introduced to the candidates. The candidates today in front of you are running for Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, District Three. Because we are recording this forum, we ask that you refrain from clapping, booing, or making other loud or unpleasant noises while candidates are speaking. And in fact, even without our friends at Create TV having taped this forum, we also ask for no disruptions and we do retain the prerogative of asking audience members who are disruptive to leave. I want to welcome you all as the live audience here in Sunnyvale and also to folks out in public access TV land. This forum will be recorded and you can find it on tape at the SV at Home Action website That will be in the email too, so you don't have to remember that. So what we're going to do here is we're going to be hearing from each candidate. They are going to be giving opening remarks. And then our cosponsors did prepare some questions to ask the candidates. We'll give everyone a fair chance to answer those questions. And then we're going to take audience questions. You might have seen that there are little cards. Those index cards are for your questions. If you need more perhaps our, who's the index card person? Mario will be the index card person, might have some more if you make a mistake. And he'll also gather those from you. And then we will prioritize questions that are duplicates. So if several people are asking the same question, we'll ask those first. If we don't get to your questions because we run out of time, we will ask the candidates to email and answer to those questions and those emails will be sent to the audience members via email. Let's see, I think that is our business today. And now we'll move to questions. Here's a kind of a general one to get us warmed up. And my first question, and we'll go ahead and start here and go this direction, and then next time we'll start with Councilmember Carrasco and we'll keep kind of changing who we start with. But right now, we'll start with you and ask, as a supervisor, what would your number one housing priority be?
All right, thank you very much. One minute? All right.
One minute.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, absolutely right. Thank you. My first time. You're free to make an opening statement and I think we're giving candidates one minute.
Thank you very much. My name is Kanson Chu. I'm a state assembly member and I served on San Jose City Council for eight years. And before that, I was on the various school board member. So I decided to bring my experience, more than a decade long of experience, back home and my connections in the state level and the local level back home to focus on the issues that are unique and important to the Santa Clara area. You know, we have only two minutes, so I have 30 seconds left. I will not be able to, you know, introduce myself to a certain extent. But I just wanted to make sure that you check my record, you know, since I have a good track record and I want you to definitely check my records and support me for county supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Magdalena Carrasco. I'm the city council member for the city of San Jose. I represent District Five, which is the east side of San Jose. And it's been a great pleasure of mine to have been sitting there for the past five years. I'm currently running for County Board of Supervisors. Before coming into this wonderful world of politics, I was a social worker for 25 years. Really started my career working with domestic violence, working with perpetrators, not the victims, because really believed that in making changes, it was really changing the paradigm of violence. And then I jumped into foster care and adoptions. Some of my greatest accomplishments, as I've been sitting on the council, has been bringing the first time ever the Women's Bill of Rights, examining how women are treated and creating a safety net for women and making sure that women are treated equally to our counterparts, of course. Bringing about a very robust wage theft ordinance, making sure men and women are getting paid fair wages. And of course, making sure that our youth especially are taken care of. Thank you so much.
Hi there. Good evening. My name's John Labor. I'm a lifelong resident of San Jose and just want to take a minute to introduce myself, kind of hit the highlights. I grew up in East San Jose, attended Alamo Rock Schools, kindergarten through eighth grade, high school, Archbishop Mitty, Dartmouth College in New Hampshire where I majored in public economics. Since then, I've had both a 15-year career in finance, project management, and governance in the public, excuse me, in the private sector, as well as a 25-year career since I started literally when I was 15, as a community advocate, an educational activist, and a park advocate in the communities where I lived. I recently was on the San Jose Planning Commission for a time, so I have a bit of experience in local land use and planning. And I'm running for county supervisor because most of the things in San Jose, Sunnyvale, and Milpitas that we really look around and see a problem with are county issues and they need to be fixed at the county level. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mary Lee?
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight, here at the Sunnyvale's Elk Lodge. And thanks, Kira, for moderating us tonight. My name's Otto Lee, former Green Mayor of Sunnyvale, right here, so welcome. I was originally an immigrant from Hong Kong, escaping the communists. We came to this country, graduated off Berkeley High, UC Berkeley, and actually served a couple of years in the Navy before I went to law school and IP, patent, trademark attorney here. I was also served five years on the Planning Commission before, right here in Sunnyvale, before I was elected into Sunnyvale City Council and served as mayor as well. And really understands the true need of affordable housing. And the valley is going to be a great place for jobs, but unfortunately, we're not building enough housing fast enough to meet this very dire need and more and more people, A, cannot afford housing, and B, with the loss of the RDA money back in 2014, one billion a year is lost. So this is what is part of the reason why our housing problem is getting so acute and this becoming one of the most important issues we've got to fix. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll start with the questioning with Councilmember Carrasco. And the first question, again, is that I was so eager to get to, is as a supervisor, what would your number one housing priority be?
Well, first of all, thank you so much. Yes, thank you, SV at Home, for putting such an important forum together. I think this is one of the greatest crises of our time. This is a crisis that not only impacts the families that are living in the streets or that are having to move out of our county, but it's an issue that is impacting everyone that's in the county and in the region, in fact. It's an economic impact. It has an impact in our communities. And I'm telling you this from the standpoint of a person that's working out in the community and has a team that's, part of the team that's here, that's working very hard with families who are really struggling. One of the, I think one of the biggest things that we can do as County Board of Supervisors is not only identifying that parcel of land, those properties that the county owns, but unlocking it and making sure that we use it to the, we'll say to the max, al cien, to all the abilities that we have so that we can incentivize and make sure that we build quickly and we preserve that which we already have. Thank you.
Just to restate the question, if I may, it's what would my number one housing priority
be? Okay. The most important challenge in front of the supervisors for this crisis, because it is a crisis, but it's a crisis of our own making, is to implement Measure A. Just a few years ago, voters like you and me approved $950 million. There are about 19 or 20 projects in the pipeline in Measure A, but not all the dollars are spent or committed. So the first thing we need to do before we do anything else is prove, as a county government, that we can be effective stewards of the public's dollars, of that $950 million, to provide the 4,800 supportive units for extremely low income, the homebuyer assistance and so forth. If we can't do that, we can't be asking with a straight face for additional resources in this area. So we have to implement Measure A as soon as possible. Thanks.
As county supervisor, we have a very special role that other agencies don't play because when you look at the homelessness issue, we look at some of the most extremely low income and those that are sleeping in the streets. We've got issues relating to mental health, physical health, drug and alcoholic rehab, veterans' issues, and just so happened, all these issues falls under the purview of the county. Having lived in a 40-foot container box in Iraq, I've been able to know that that should relieve beats living in a tent. So I do believe that having emergency temporary housing being put in place right now is saving lives every day. Sunnyvale's one of the few cities that actually has a 24-year-round shelter, which is great, but that place is packed right here by 101. And I think it's so important that we put resources to make sure that people get housed immediately. And I certainly believe housing first is a priority that we need to focus on.
Thank you. And Assemblymember Chu?
Thank you very much. The other candidate mentioned about the importance, so I'm not going to reiterate that. I think what I would like to do as a county supervisor is to gather all the stakeholders, the Silicon Valley at home, the developers, the people that are worried about displacement and the private sector, the nonprofit, and Sunnyvale Community Service people, get a group of people, the stakeholders, together to develop a long-term plan. And we have mentioned about the billion dollar from Measure A. The state, you know, I definitely have some fingerprint on that. Also, in this year, the budget allocates $35 billion to address those issues. So instead of talking about a piecemeal solution, you know, do this and do that, I wanted to have a long-term plan on how do we address those issues. Because, you know, when I was on the San Jose City Council, we're on the different side, where there's foreclosures, the pop, so, yeah, so one minute.
I know. It's very short.
We usually give the, you know, we usually give them people two minutes to testify in front of our committee.
City Hall, it's tougher.
One minute is very challenging, but again, check my record.
Thank you.
She's on the other foot.
Councilmember Carrasco mentioned county land, and this question is about county land. Last year, the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors approved the Civic Center Master Plan. And this master plan sets the framework for development and redevelopment within the Civic Center's 55-acre area. The plan is going to centralize many county services and at the same time, the board directed staff to begin preparing a housing plan for the area with permanent affordable and supportive housing, but the details are yet to be kind of developed. So as a supervisor, what will you do to ensure that the county prioritize housing at the Civic Center campus? And again, I'm afraid this is one minute. It does feel a little good, actually. I've been held to that one minute as well and it's tough. So good luck, Mr. Labor, and you can be in.
So the first thing I need to disclose is that I am a neighbor of all the candidates. I live right now closest to the Civic Center on North First Street, right about a mile away on the other side of 880. And that particular area actually has a substantial amount of affordable housing, as well as like single-family homes. It's quite mixed and sort of a patchwork there next to the airport. I do believe there is a role for housing of all levels at the Civic Center. I guess my biggest concern in terms of implementation would be ensuring that we have a proper balance as far as parking and transit resources and so forth. You know, light rail goes right by, but just to answer it briefly, I would support housing at the Civic Center.
And Mary Lee? And can I ask you to keep the mic up close because folks are having a hard time hearing you?
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. All right, is this better? Okay, thank you. Yes, the Civic Center plan is pretty exciting. If you haven't seen, it's actually on the website, very colorful, and it talks about the various stages of how this is going to work out. I absolutely support the vision of putting more housing near where the services are. And where the county is right now, not only is there planned social services agencies right on site, but also the fact, as mentioned, light rail is just right there. So it's a really great place to put a lot of potential housing units right in downtown so that people could get to where they need for those services. We should not put affordable housing into necessarily remote areas so that people can get to it. The idea is that we want to integrate them into the community, especially where the services and supportive services is right there. So I strongly support that concept and as a supervisor, to make sure that gets implemented as soon as possible. Thank you.
Right, I don't know whether I live closer to the Civic Center compared to John or not, but two miles from, I live on the other side of Heading Street. Definitely I would support that development. And as a state assembly member, I have a good record of supporting all those very, very difficult housing bills. I work with the INB, the support, the just cost eviction, the rent control, and I'm a co-author of SB 50, so definitely just look at my track record. I am very, very supportive of the housing development. Thank you.
And the mic. Just handle it.
There you go. You've got a backup here. Here goes the backup.
Look, I got so excited, I broke my glasses. This is an exciting project for a couple of reasons. One, it's in an urban village. It's in a transit corridor. It's in front of the San Jose PD and down the street from the Sheriff's Department. The reason why that's important is because it makes for a great place, especially when we're going, when we're talking about housing survivors of domestic violence or survivors of human trafficking or survivors of sexual abuse. And I've worked with all those populations. And then the cherry on the sundae is that it's county property. So we've been talking about identifying those properties and those parcels where county owns it and they can build and hopefully streamline that process. But the last piece of this is that in the meantime, while they're developing their master plan and they're coming to conclusion, and I know that they, that we will talk about high-density housing, is that in the meantime, you'll have tiny homes currently or very soon to house temporarily families and hopefully up to 100 families per year until they get into permanent housing.
Thank you. That's okay. I got it. All right. All right, so this is also a question about public land, but a kind of a different kind of public land, Stanford University. Stanford University intends to expand housing on its campus. However, the university's been criticized for its plan in which some claim that not enough is being done to house its blue-collar workforce, not only the blue-collar workforce, but also student, faculty, and administrative employees. Dialogue and negotiations between university administrators and the county of Santa Clara have, seem to have stalled. As a supervisor, what would you do to resume negotiations between the university and the county? And what would be your goal for those negotiations? And I believe it is your turn, Mr. Lee, to start.
Great, thank you. Stanford University is a world-class institution. And as a Cal grad, like some of us here, it's hard to say that since we are adversary in other things, but it is a wonderful school and it has a reputation of doing things with excellence. And I think we should hold them accountable in the same way when it comes to building housing to the community. The recent proposal that they have put together has included units that is already half-built, almost finishing. That really does not really help the solution. And we really need to hold Stanford to higher standard in terms of the number of units being proposed. The county has put forth some numbers, which basically quadrupled the number that's been being proposed. And I think it's certainly necessary in order to make sure that Stanford is doing its part. Because at the end of the day, you have to understand lots of housing being built by Stanford might not be under the property tax that we collect being, is Stanford a, be a nonprofit. So we really need to make sure that those are transparent. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's when the experience come in, you know, when I was on the San Jose City Council, I gathered together a North San Jose Task Force. We worked 18 months on trying to redevelop the North San Jose portion of the San Jose, North San Jose portion of the San Jose. But anyway, so in that neighborhood planned, we have residential density can go up to as high as 90 units per acre. And so it is really the opportunity for us to talk to Stanford, you know, and negotiate and pretty much educate them, the need for their faculty, the need for their students, and also the need for their neighborhood. And make sure that not only they have a higher-density housing development there, but also consider the traffic impact over there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Between 2010 and 2016, there was over 270,000 jobs that were created in the Bay Area. Wonderful news for people who want a job, great news. But only 106,000 housing units that were created. Huge imbalance in terms of jobs and housing. As a result, we don't only have a housing crisis, we have a huge nightmare when you jump on the freeway or you jump on local streets. And it's because people are commuting from far-off lands, such as Fresno, Modesto, Tracy. They're coming from the East Bay, coming into Silicon Valley because there's not enough housing units, there's not enough workforce housing. And so we're not asking Stanford to be the end-all, be-all solution to the housing crisis. But they've put in nine, they want to put 9,000 students on their campus and we're asking them to simply be part of a solution instead of increase the harm.
Thank you.
I'm not sure that I want to reveal everything I would say because this would be part of, you know, a negotiation with Stanford, but I think it's really key that we align with them on our core values and their core values. Stanford as a university, as an institution, is in a unique position here. The county is not doing general use permits with every little company or developer. It's just Stanford is pretty much the only one that gets one of these every, you know, couple decades because of their position in an unincorporated area of the county. So from a sustainability perspective, it is incumbent on Stanford to internalize as much of the traffic, vehicle miles traveled, carbon emissions, air pollution, and just the community interaction into their campus as much as possible. Universities can build dorms. It's kind of weird for LinkedIn or Google to build a dorm, but it's perfectly normal for a university to build a dorm that is not only for its students, but for its faculty, for staff, for support staff on campus. So I think we need to go back to Stanford and insist that they internalize the liabilities they're putting on their surrounding community. Thanks.
All right, remember when it was one minute to answer a question? This is even shorter. So this is what they're calling the fire round. I'm not sure why it's like pants on fire, but, so some kind of fire. And so we're going to practice with an easy question, one or two words. So it's, the answer should be just, like, it could be yes, no, it could be one or two words. So we're going to try with something easy. Okay, you're going to start. What's your favorite flavor of ice cream? Quick.
Oh, vanilla.
Okay, hand the mic over.
Vanilla.
Okay, next.
Cherry's Jubilee.
Oh.
Coffee.
Coffee, ooh. All right, next. Okay, we, I think we need a little more practice. We're going to go faster. What was the last book you read?
Dr. Seuss, read to my granddaughter.
Healthy Habits.
Fifth Risk.
Last book.
Fiasco, about Iraq.
All right. And now, what was the, we're just getting, let's just keep doing this round because I don't think it's terribly controversial, the order, but we can switch it up if you want to. What was the last transit trip you took?
It would be a, gee, a couple years ago, took the train to Sacramento.
Okay, Amtrak.
Amtrak.
All right.
Visit my daughter on Bart.
Light rail from home to my office.
Okay.
Taking the 22, lucky, the 522, from about quarter mile from my house to my work.
Okay. And, all right, let's start with Councilmember Carrasco. And the question is, what's the best county-owned affordable, county-owned opportunity site for affordable housing?
Best county-owned opportunity for affordable housing? Well, I'll go back to the Civic Center Plaza.
Okay.
Civic Center.
I think Civic Center, but certainly we should look into other areas like the county fairgrounds.
The county is doing the inventory of the surplus land, so there should be some good opportunity pop up.
Okay.
And the state is doing one too as well.
All right, remember, couple words here. We've got, still on the fire, we're still on fire here. One more, one more fire. Mr. Labor, you'll start. Would you support a new county funding measure for affordable housing?
Not until Measure A is done.
Okay.
Yes, we need to.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. You still have time? Yes? I'm not watching time. Okay, I mean generally. Okay, should I move to audience questions? Because we still have two more, two more sponsor questions. Okay. All right, the last one. I cannot remember who's, I think it's Mr. Lee who's first. Every two years, the county of Santa Clara conducts a point-in-time homeless census. This year, the results indicated an increase in the homeless population from two years ago. It said that for every person housed, three more become unhoused. As a supervisor, how would you address the homelessness crisis throughout the county and how does 2016 Measure A dollars come into account? Two minutes for this one.
Thank you.
So you can get fancy.
Good. The report is not surprising, but it's clearly very sad of what's going on in our county. Our homeless situation is getting to a point where you could see it's like what we have seen in Oakland or San Francisco. As I said earlier before, I do believe that there are, when you see the underpasses, when you see the creek with people putting up tents, this is absolutely not acceptable. We're a Santa Clara county. We're really the richest county in the nation with companies like Facebook, Google, Yahoo, Apple, Intel here. We could definitely do better in a way of now. And that's why I think that some of the temporary solutions that I mentioned earlier is important. As I mentioned earlier, I've lived in the 40-foot container box for a year in Iraq. The military has a way to do things. Sometimes they put us in tents, but sometimes they actually put us in hard housing and when, even in the container box. We have a window, we have a door, we have an AC unit, and it does provide us both privacy and security. And it really is much better than what we have now when people pitch tents anywhere they can find a space. And this, I hope, will be one of the solutions, is a pilot project for me to bring up. San Jose has talked about some tiny homes projects. I think those are very exciting ideas as well. And as I said earlier, there's no real silver bullet of one thing fits all. Short-term housing is absolutely, temporary housing is really important to get people somewhere safe first. In addition, when we talk about the Measure A funding, I think Measure A could be applied to some of these, plus of course, even middle and longer term. Preventing people getting into homelessness is also just as important because it's the cheapest way to prevent future growth of the homeless population. A lot of people are one paycheck away from homelessness. So we also need to make sure that we can find housing for people who are recently homeless or those who are very close to it and those who are victims of domestic violence as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lee. And Assemblymember?
Thank you very much. Yeah, it is, if this is surprising, I've got bad news for you. Because I participated in one of the counts when I was on the San Jose City Council, it is grossly undercounted. There are so many people that are living in the car or just hide it in somewhere that not, excuse me, included in those 8,000 homeless people. So that's why I say in the beginning, we need to really have a long-term plan, understand that there are different reasons to become homelessness. You know, it could be domestic violence and it could be just people, the landlord raised the rent, they cannot afford it, or those afford it, or those people working on two jobs unfortunately lose one job. So we, it it goes in the gamut. And then definitely, people were talking about homelessness. You're thinking about those what we call a chronicle homeless people. They have multiple barriers, they sometimes a drug addict or mental illness problem. But on the other end, we have those working poor that just cannot afford a home. So we were talking, addressing the homelessness issue, we need to, you know, know what was the cost of their homelessness, and then and come up with a solution. Uh the repurposed housing or even prevention when they are, you know, note got a notice that their rent is in increased to a point that they cannot afford it, they could, there are some county uh services that provide provide them to really renegotiate with their landlord. Uh so rapid, and then this is a preventive measurement. And then we have a rapid uh re-uh rehousing money. And we may either as a county, as a government agency, provide some uh first down payment or first month rent for those people that 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 need it, and then um uh interest-free.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um the the census showed that in the last two years, uh the homeless or unsheltered population went up thirty-one percent in the county. In the city of San Jose, the largest city, uh it went up forty-two percent. Uh for the last two years, I've been sitting on uh on a a policy link representing the city of San Jose, which is a an organization or a a committee, if you will, that has gathered policymakers, lawyers, stakeholders from all throughout the country to address this issue. Uh y- you may already know this, I may be preaching to the choir, that this isn't just happening in San Jose, it's not just happening in Sunnyvale, it's not just happening in Milpitas, it's not just happening in uh in our region, it's happening throughout the entire country. People are losing their homes, they're being displaced, communities are being gentrified throughout the entire country. And what we found are two things. One is, they're losing it because, it's very obvious, rents are going up. Very simple. And two, where there's transit corridors, people are losing their uh their homes. And that's because of speculation. And so, one is that our transit uh or our transportation agencies have to really consider purchasing and investing in those transit quarters before they ever go in, so that we can start building affordable housing. That's one. And two, we have to really put into place very stringent rent control and tenant protection rights.
Thank you.
Years ago, decades ago, in World War II, President Eisenhower, who was general at the time, is rumored to have said, if you want to solve a complex problem, you have to enlarge it. Right now, we're viewing homelessness from the lens that it is simply a housing supply issue. It is not simply a housing supply and demand issue. That same point-in-time census said that over forty percent of the homeless have experienced mental health problems. People with mental health issues have trouble doing all the rest of their activities of daily life, including holding down a job and taking care of whatever home they have and so forth. As the County of Santa Clara, that has a responsibility for public health and mental health, we need to double down on our mental health crisis intervention to keep people from spiraling out of control. We need to double down on our support for families and social work, so that when they have a mental health crisis on the home front, they can be supported. And then, of course, we need to do all those other things as far as implementing, you know, additional housing, implementing Measure A, and putting the units on the market. I would also say that the county needs to take a leadership role in terms of convening local governments. Not sure quite how you get, you know, fifteen city councils plus the Board of Supervisors in one room with, you know, the Brown Act and so forth. But somehow, we need to conven local leaders and look at those areas that have underproduced. We're underproducing housing to the tune of about ten to one, so an order of magnitude. Um not to correct anybody too boastfully here, but I believe the number was something like seven hundred thirty-two thousand uh jobs against like a hundred six or a hundred twenty. But it's basically seven hundred thousand jobs versus one hundred thousand units over a period of time uh across the Bay Area. That is just not sustainable. And there are cities in this county that are particularly egregious, looking at you, Palo Alto and Santa Clara, in terms of approving millions of square feet. Um oh, and Cupertino with Apple Park, three million square feet at Apple Park, no units at Valco. It's a huge community fight, right? We've got it, we've got to do all those things.
Thank you. All right, we've got five audience questions. I think if you don't need the full minute, let's see if we can get through these questions. So just as quickly as we can, some, you know, there might be a little bit of duplication with what you've said before. Uh the first one, and again, I put my glasses on because I need to be able to read it. The Board of Supervisors has dedicated almost all of the nine hundred and fifty million approved by the voters in two thousand sixteen Measure A to creating housing for people already homeless with no dollars dedicated to preventing homelessness for the extremely low-income households. Would you consider shifting more county resources to preventing homelessness among vulnerable people? And I believe the next, uh let's see, I think it is Assemblymember Chu who's first.
I'm a strong advocate for prevention, you know. One ounce of prevention is what uh one and one pound and one pounds of medicine. So, uh yes, and um we, when we talk about the mental health issue, I also wanted to share with you that I served on the county mental health board for many, many years. And just earlier this year, I received the recognition for Mental Health America for uh as a one and only one uh Assemblymember from California that rec- that would receive the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh thank you. Uh because the measure, Measure A was already approved by the voters, uh we wouldn't be able to shift that, those resources. But uh we could do so much more in terms of our mental health uh funding, uh the other kinds of services that the county provides, which is many. Uh and so I've always been a big proponent of it. I worked uh in early childhood development uh with First Five and through Gardner Health, and also in uh Judge Chapman's uh Domestic Violence um Court. And so we know that preventing is is so much more, adds so much more value and saves so much more money in the long run than doing any sort of intervention type of work. So yes, the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Any solution to expanding support and preventing people from spiraling, I will support as long as it is fiscally responsible. So, yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes, the importance of prevention, of preventing homelessness, I think is actually something that's not been talked about enough in the public. Um in the sense that not only is it uh cheaper to deal with that situation now to prevent a future problem, uh when you experience homelessness, uh the amount of trauma, uh the amount of pain and suffering that especially a family with children is something that could be, could be far more uh impactful uh to our vulnerables. So I think it is absolutely crucial that not so much we should shift the money. I think the money is needed right now for dealing with those who are homeless, to but also to find additional funding to deal with the preventive uh on homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll start with uh Councilmember Carrasco. Um the question is from the audience, what can the Board of Supervisors do to support cities or support cities like Cupertino and Palo Alto that have not created their fair share of affordable housing and give them positive reasons to create affordable housing?
Besides big bouquets of flowers, positive reinforcement. Uh I thi- this, this is an all-hands-on-deck. This is, this is a crisis of epic proportion. This is not any, this should not rest on anyone's shoulders. And uh and it's disappointing to see when one city thinks that they can uh escape their um their moral obligation. Uh I'll say this, and I said it earlier. The the issues are not just the issues that impact the family that that's unsheltered or the individual that's unsheltered. This has economic impacts, this has environmental impacts, this has impacts to your children. I challenge anyone who has not been impacted by our unsheltered crisis. As you're driving down the freeway, I challenge anyone who has children to say, look away, it's not happening in my backyard. And how will we be judged ten, twenty, thirty years from now if we don't act today?
Thank you.
One way that we can do something about it in terms of adding to the housing stock in those communities that have underbuilt is, in the event the county owns land, and the county is the largest landowner in the county, when the county owns land somewhere, um we need to look at using that site uh as a potential development site in that community for various types of housing. At the state level, there's a lot of legislation that's shifting and changing um to limit what cities can do to regulate against housing that is um, you know, that is near transit and so forth. So I I think we'll see some relief on that front in the next couple of years. But the county could look at developing in other communities. I'll just give you a quick example. Nineteen units in Cupertino for Measure A, or excuse me, twenty units in Cupertino for Measure A. There are nineteen projects in the pipeline, fifteen of them are in San Jose, none are in Palo Alto. Why is that?
Okay, thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, I was actually grew up in Hong Kong in my first fifteen years of my life. And so when they talks about high density, five stories to me is not high density. Thirty stories to me is high density. Why I want to use that example is that I think we need to to basically educate people what high-density housing means. I think a lot of times people thought about the projects, the public uh project housing in Chicago, like drug-infested. That's what high density is, it's not. As a matter of fact, there's many wonderful high-density projects that is very successful, so long they're planned uh well, with parks and amenities uh that people could enjoy. And so I think it's important to make sure that that education is in place to educate our neighbors. Another issue people worry about is really traffic, right? Well, more people come here, there'll be traffic. And I do believe that a lot of our expressways were built like thirty, forty years ago. Uh planned with not many people in place. So I think if we could improve our roadways as well, for example, why do we have so many stoplights on expressways? How about getting rid of them, have overpasses on the passes? So for safety, traffic should move faster. So those are, I think, are great ideas that we could make it more palatable to those communities. Thank you.
Assemblymember?
Thank you very much. I was honored to be appointed to represent City of San Jose as a ABAC Association of Bay Area Government Board for the eight years. And we work very closely with the MTC on the RIN number. As a, you're Assemblymember, I have been a strong advocate of providing not just the carrot, but also the stick to to those uh cities that don't meet the RIN number. And this year, we, the the state has sued at least Huntington Beach and two other cities for not uh meeting the the RIN number, but will also provide thirty-five billion dollars for to encourage the city to take advantage of the money and build affordable housing. So I think the key is to make sure that the RIN number has some more teeth to it.
Okay, we're starting with Mr. Leba. And this question is, and these are one minute. I think it's your turn, yeah?
Sure.
Yes, okay. Uh given that Santa Clara County covers many cities, including Sunnyvale, the second largest, it says in parentheses, how can you ensure that Sunnyvale and Milpitas will be well represented?
Sure. Because I will listen to you, and I will get out into your community and talk with you, and I'll have an open-door policy. I believe that one interesting thing, despite the fact that our District Three is so diverse and spans such a large distance from, you know, Mount Hamilton to Evergreen and San Jose, all the way around to Sunnyvale and the and the Baylands, but there's a lot in common across all our cities. We're all dealing with housing, we're all dealing with homelessness, we're all dealing with density, traffic, all the same woes across the district. So I, you know, grew up in not just in one little corner of San Jose, but from all over, you know, all over the valley. You know, I see a doctor in in Sunnyvale, and, you know, I had a dentist in Milpitas, and go to the parks in Milpitas, and and, you know, came to the parks when I was a little kid in Sunnyvale. I mean, I just, I've lived throughout all of the valley, and I try to be in touch with that. And I will make a point of representing all of the constituents equally across District Three.
Thank you. As I mentioned, having served as Sunnyvale's mayor previously, I've lived in this community in Sunnyvale for twenty-five years, uh and have certainly spent lots of times uh beside San Jose. My day job, I'm actually in San Jose, that's why I spend a lot of my time during the day. But certainly, a lot of my weekends and and family time, I do spend in both Sunnyvale and Milpitas, partly because Milpitas does have very, very great restaurants. Honestly, the the community we share has a lot of commonality besides the diversity. Uh we have a very high Asian-Pacific-American community in these communities, where over forty percent of the district is registered uh Asian-Pacific-Americans. Uh and I think we share many of the values and issues. And so therefore, I certainly will make sure that the communities are all equally represented and not just be San Jose-centric. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Since I was on the various school board member, I have an open-door policy, and I have a community office hour for the last two decades. Um so Sunnyvale people, don't worry, you don't have to travel down to Hadding Street to meet me. I will come to your community, and I will hold the community office hour, and we can, you know, do it after hour, after work. You don't have to worry about taking time off from from your busy schedule, and I'll be here talking to you. Again, look at my track record. I have community hours uh every week. You know, it's, right now, I represent five cities, so I end up uh in each city at at least once a a a a month. The next one will be in San Jose. I would uh share with you the date and the time.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh I I know that that's a fear because uh everyone thinks that we're, that that would happen. I can understand that. Uh when I came into into the city council, my biggest commitment was to make sure that our residents never had to go to City Hall unless they wanted to. Uh and so my team works very hard. There's one major criteria in order to get on my team. Because I represent the east side, and it was uh the underdog of the city, the criteria had to be, you have to love the east side as much as I love the east side, because it had so many challenges. The same thing would go for the County Board of Supervisor. You have to love Sunnyvale, you have to love Milpitas as much as all of you love it. I don't know it yet. I will get to know it, just like I got to know every single corner of the east side of San Jose. And my commitment is that you don't have to travel all the way to San Jose to get to know your County Board of Supervisors or your staff. Your staff is here, they are your team for you to use, not abuse, but to get to know them and to get to uh the services that you all need.
Thank you. Uh so we've come to the time of closing remarks. There are two questions um from the audience that were left. These will be emailed to the candidates, and they will be asked to respond, and we will uh email the responses out to the um to the audience. And we're starting with Mayor Lee at the end, and you have one minute.
Thank you again for taking time tonight to uh listen to one of the most important problems that we're trying to solve here in the from terms of affordable housing here instead of listening to the presidential debates. Uh I do believe that this is the the crisis that is, uh that's why it's one of my key issue that I talk about in my my platform, my running for county supervisors. Uh some of you have known, I've also run for this eleven and twelve years ago. So I get to know the district really, really well. I've walked the district at least two times, and I plan to do the same thing, knocking on doors, talking to voters. Because at the end of the day, it is the voter that matters uh on issues. And what I've learned most recently is that a lot of voters are very concerned about uh legal homeless issues, having a fire affecting the neighborhoods. And if you could see what fire is, a big danger. Look at what happened to BG&E. Uh the east side with the hillside, there was a big fire that got put out uh just about a couple of months ago. Couple of years ago, same thing happened to uh to uh to uh Milpitas hillside. And and the the issue of homelessness is is far bigger than just homes. So I I do believe that this is something, this is an existential crisis for us in terms of living here. So we need to fix it. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much for taking the time and joining us for this uh forum. Um you know, I came to the country. You know, I came to the country, United States, as a graduate student at the age of 23 and doesn't speak English. So this is really beyond my widest dream that I'll be able to get elected by 73% of the people in my district and serve as the only assembly member that was educated outside of the United States. So I took my job very, very seriously and the fact I am a non-public servant, check my record, check my record, not a politician. A lot of people wondering, why do you have three, three more easy term in the assembly and you wanted to come back to run for the supervisor, a lower position? I say, no, as a public servant, I go where my heart wants to go. I go where I think I can make the strongest impact. And that's why I'm coming back home and, and run for the supervisor. I'm very fortunate to have so received so many well wishes. So thank you again.
Thank you. Well, thank you again for, for taking your time and being here. And thank you so much to SB at Home and all the co-sponsors for dealing with such an important issue. For me, running for the board of supervisors feels like going back home. It's dealing with some of the most important issues that we're dealing with as a county, as a society, mental health issues, issues that are affecting our families, single women, women who are survivors of domestic violence, children especially. And we, we need to make sure that there, that we have a place for everyone. We need to make sure that our families are safe and that Santa Clara County will continue to be one of the most progressive counties, not in just California, but really we have the reputation of being one of the most progressive counties in the nation. And the reason why we're so progressive is because we've always had a place for everybody. We're inclusive, we're diverse, and we have, we're at, we're running the risk of no longer having that reputation. So I want to be a part of a solution. Thank you.
I have one of these. Don't worry. Our local government has accountability and transparency problems. You'll remember if I put you in the time machine back five, 10 years ago, the whole overrun, hundreds of millions of dollars at Valley Medical Center. Everybody remember that? So it cost hundreds more than it should have. I have 15 years' experience in finance, moving obscene sums of money when I worked in, in corporate treasury and foreign exchange and cash management, in project management and project governance, setting up systems to allow leaders to understand and know the drivers of what's happening in projects and programs. We need oversight and we need to make sure that we use every dollar wisely because we know, we know housing is an issue, we know homelessness is an issue, we know mental health, public health, all of it, the whole gamut of what the county does, it's important. So every dollar we spend needs to be treated like it's our last dollar. Every dollar that gets thrown on a special project needs to be treated like it's a budget cut somewhere else that we really care about it. So that's my commitment to you, that I will spend your dollars wisely.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's give a hand to these folks for putting themselves out here, putting up with our one-minute questions. Thanks. We'll be back in 10 minutes for the Senate race forum. So I want to introduce folks here. We are in a candidate forum for California Senate District 13. And first we have Redwood City Councilmember Shelley Mazur. Next, Burlingame City Councilmember Michael Brownrigg. And then at the far end, former Assemblymember Sally Lieber. And we're missing a couple folks, just for the record. Josh Becker could not make it and Annie Oliva, who is a Millbrae City Councilmember, could not make it today as well. And I will start here with Councilmember Mazur and you can have your one minute.
Awesome, thank you. Well, thank you for having us tonight. I feel like every time I come to the Sunnyvale Elks Lodge, I'm talking about housing. So, so happy to be here. I will just say, if you want to know where somebody's going to go, take a look at where they've been. So let me tell you a quick bit about where I've been. I've been a fighter for public education as a mom in a low-income school in Mountain View, actually, and then as a school board member in Redwood City School District, fighting for all of our students. I've been an organizer around women's health and reproductive rights, putting my body in between the people, the women who sought healthcare and the people who are seeking to shut those clinics down. I've been an advocate for a path out of poverty as a Redwood City Councilmember, working on affordable housing, increasing the minimum wage faster than the state, and working on access to high-quality, affordable childcare. I want to take all of those things that I've been and bring us forward to the future where we're fighting for a strong California for all of our communities.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kira. Thank you to Tech Equity. Thank you for the Elks for hosting tonight. Thank you guys for being here late. I appreciate it. I'm Michael Brownrigg. I'm a 10-year council member for the City of Burlingame, twice mayor. 30 years of public service, including 12 years as a U.S. diplomat, eight years on plan and commission, and a career of making government work for people. I think we have some really significant challenges. I think the three of us will probably agree on what those challenges are. And so what I ask you to consider is who's most likely to get things done. In my city, over the last five years, we've paid down our pension and health deficits. We've put more money into infrastructure, we've opened new schools, we've opened new parks. We have a profoundly new and improved housing plan that will generate 20% increase in housing units over the next 10 years. If you know my city and you know how conservative we are, you know how hard that was to get done. I take pleasure in working on the projects no one else wants to take on and I want to make sure that we make California ready for the future and accessible to everybody. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I want to thank all of the organizing committee and all the organizations who have come together and each of you for being here tonight. This is the real challenge for California and it touches on so many issues. It touches on the quality of our environment, on equity for our communities, on moving California forward as a fair state and a state of opportunity. And so I'm so pleased to be here tonight to talk about housing and what we can all do together. As Kira mentioned, I served in the State Assembly for three terms and had the pleasure of representing Sunnyvale there. And previous to that, I served on city council and was mayor in Mountain View. And I really found that there were opportunities to do good things for housing at each of those levels. And there are so many policy solutions in our toolkits that what it really just takes is the activist community to push those forward. And so I'm so heartened to see the show of support here and to work with you going forward.
Thank you. I'm going to give you another minute to talk about housing and the softball question is what's your number one housing priority? And we'll start with you, Councilmember Brownrigg.
So housing is my number one priority. I cheat a little bit when I get asked this because I think climate is also a number one priority for me and we have to work on both on an urgent basis. So we need to work with each city along the peninsula to increase density, but we need to do it in a way that works with city leadership. I look at the progress that's been made in my city, in this city of Sunnyvale, in the city of Mountain View, in the city of San Mateo, and you can see the housing units going up. So I know we can get this done, but I also know the state can lean in to help. Take teacher housing, which I think is really important. If you ask a school district to lean into building teacher housing where there is public land, they have a great deal of risk. They don't know, know how to build housing and they don't want to take that risk and they shouldn't. Their fiduciary is to the school district. So what the state can do is create a guarantee fund and take that risk off the shoulders of the school board. Take off the construction risk, take off the financing risk, take off the rent risk and let the school board say yes to building teacher housing. That's just one of the many creative approaches I think we need to get more housing built. Thank you.
What's most important to me in terms of solving our need for housing is the need for affordable housing at multiple levels. So extremely low-income housing is a category that we're just utterly lacking in. The missing middle, particularly for families, preservation of our mobile home parks as affordable housing, preservation of our existing stock of, of affordable apartments, and keeping people in their homes, so protection from evictions and really looking at how we can increase the supply without displacing people that are already in our communities.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this year, the state took some action, which I know we'll talk about. For me, what I think is most important at this moment is the production of new housing. And if we look at what Redwood City's done in the last five to seven years, we've produced 4,000 units of housing. We've done a great job on market rate, we have not done as well on the low-income housing. So my, my priority is creating housing at all levels. I'm happy to talk about the missing middle housing because I just sat on a panel for that last week, talking about how cities can work with the state to create new housing. And if we think about the role that the state can play in all of this, although I think I might be pre-answering another question, is to think about how does the state help create the conditions for cities to build the housing that they need? And that may be funding, that may be streamlining regulations, there's a whole variety of different approaches that the state can take. But if you assume that production's the priority, then you have to look at the state to come in and help with that.
Thanks. Well, Councilmember Brownrigg mentioned leaning in, so let's talk a little bit more about that and about the state's role. And I think Assemblymember Lieber is first. And what is really, what is the role for the state in addressing the housing crisis? And what, what can the state really do that other players can't do?
Well, currently, right now, thanks to the approval of the voters, we have a housing bond at the state level that is rolling out money to local communities. And I think that there's a lot that can be done in terms of legislation. We have 29 transit agencies in the Bay Area. Only one is authorized by the state legislature to, to use its surface parking lots and surplus properties for housing. We can change that very, very easily. There's a whole range of incentives that can be put into place by the state legislature. And I think this issue is finally coming to fruition and there's a buy-in that there is a crisis and there are things that we can do. And I think that this was really the first fruitful year in the state legislature where there was support coming from a governor, signing bills to protect people in the housing that they have and to try to work to create new housing coming for, going forward in the next year. I'm very eager, everybody here has probably heard about SB 50, I'm eager to see the changes that will be proposed on that next year.
So this year, I sat on the Lake of California Cities Housing Community and Economic Development Policy Committee. So I was working with city council members from across the state to address policies introduced by the state. I will say that for the most part, my colleagues across the state were not keen on the majority of the housing bills that were introduced this year. That being said, it was, it was good for me to hear their thoughts because it gives me a way of thinking about how does the state then work with cities across the state in different communities to do the, what we need to do, which as I stated in the previous question was, build more housing. So I think there's a couple of things the state can do. One is the state can continue on its funding. It has provided funding on homelessness, it's provided funding around low-income housing. We do have to increase the funding we have available for middle-income housing as well. And I think the state can continue to work on bringing back redevelopment, which is, was a critical tool that cities had to help build housing and it's helped us in Redwood City significantly.
Thanks very much. So I think the state has misidentified the key problem. The state has decided that it's local officials that are blocking housing. The majority of the housing that we need is going to be built on private land. So yes, there's some high-profile examples of local officials getting in the way, but actually we see a lot of housing going up when we get the projects proposed. So the state needs to lean into how to help private redevelopment and that's why the redevelopment agency would be a good add. I am proud of the work that we've done. 10 years ago, we rezoned our downtown for 55 feet so that we would get mixed use. Five years ago, I started a project to identify at-grade parking lots and we're going to cut the ribbon, we're going to ground break next week on 132 units of affordable housing in a five-story building in the middle of our downtown. If you thought any, if anybody thought that was easy in my city, you don't know our city. So what could the state do? The state could reward cities that are stepping up with more housing and say, here's a low-cost or no-cost infrastructure fund for the schools you're going to now need with these new people or the water infrastructure or the parks. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, well, someone already mentioned Senate Bill 50, so let's go there. That was a very discussed bill, obviously, in this session and that would have rewritten zoning codes to allow mid-rise apartments in transit-rich areas and multifamily housing in jobs-rich areas. Did you or do you support SB 50 and why or why not? And you are first.
Thank you. Well, I would say that this was the most asked question at events that we held this past spring and summer. So I was always counting the seconds until somebody asked that question when I finished talking. So I, what I have said is I support SB 50 with modifications. And I'll give you the two modifications that I've discussed with Senator Weiner, who has endorsed me. One was that we give cities a limited amount of time to develop their own transit-oriented development plan. If they do not develop a transit-oriented development plan that meets the goals of SB 50 within the timeframe, then they would be subject to the rules of SB 50. The second was, in the negotiations, and I understand that this is part of the legislative process, but in the negotiations, counties of 600,000 or fewer were exempted from SB 50. I just don't think that's right. If we're going to meet the governor's goal of three and a half million new homes, we cannot put it all on 15 counties in the state. And so what I would like to see is that exemption removed from those lower, those lower population counties.
So I don't support SB 50 as drafted. As my earlier answers probably indicated, I do trust local officials and I'd like to work with them to make sure we get the plans that are going to work for those cities to actually get density built. That's what we need to do. So if you look at the way SB 50 is written, it says any single-family home neighborhood near transit needs to go to five stories. But actually, a lot of our cities would prefer and would do better by rezoning commercial areas that are near transit. SB 50 is silent on that. SB 50 would tell Mountain View that it should put its density on Caltrain or on El Camino. Where are the jobs in Mountain View? They're on the Bayside by Google. That's where the density should go. We should lean into, yes, some strong persuasion with local officials, but really we should make their job easier to put density where it will work best for the city, for transit, for traffic. And the, and the state can hold them accountable, but make them responsible for delivering the best plans for their citizens.
So SB 50 kind of sucked a lot of the oxygen out of the room in, in the legislature this year. And I'm so glad that it's a two-year bill rather than it being killed outright so that we have time over the next year to talk about the changes to it. A change that I'm really looking for is an increased percentage of affordable housing and affordable at all levels, including extremely low-income housing and supportive housing being in there. As it stands right now, the bill has a lot of support from the business community, a lot of support from the for-profit developers, some support from the nonprofit developers. But there were a lot of folks who were still on the fence and there's a lot of discussions yet to come. So if you didn't have a chance to participate over, in SB 50 over the past year, everybody's going to have a chance to participate in it going forward. And I would really encourage you to look at the details, look at the amounts of affordable housing that are proposed, look at the way that the bill takes a snapshot of the current mix of development and holds that constant into the future.
Thank you. In addition to SB 50, the legislature recently considered a number of other housing-related bills, including AB 1482, which was a landmark tenant protection bill, and SB 330, which prohibited growth controls, moratoria, and downzoning. What other specific housing solutions do you support? And I believe we're starting with Councilmember Brownrigg.
So I'll share with you, I don't know if I can do this in a minute. What worries me the most about preservation is not what we talk about a lot, but what I see in my own city is an awful lot of de facto affordable housing in high, in modest apartment buildings that were built in the 70s and 80s with the SNL tax credits. And those buildings are getting tired and they are generally owned by mom and pops. And those mom and pops see them as their savings plan for their kids or, or retirement. The problem we have in my city is when those buildings, which have, which are often well below market, sell, that's when the rents go up 40, 50, and 60%. That's the transition that I'm worried about. So what I'd like to do is create a pool of capital for the state to lend to the nonprofit sector. I'd like to cut the red tape on buying buildings like that. I'd like to get rid of the income checks. Just look at the envelope of the building. What's its rent package? If it's below market, then allow the nonprofits to buy it. And moreover, create an incentive for the seller so that the selling family gets a capital gains rebate or some real estate exchange in order to incent them to sell to nonprofits, which is to nonprofits, which is a long-term way of capping rent spikes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very thankful for the progress that was made this year in terms of keeping, keeping people in their homes. I think that we need to have more speed humps to block potential conversion of mobile home parks. I also think that we need to have compact housing that's linked to transit and small business, and that we need to look at the situation with the ADUs now that the cities can no longer block the accessory dwelling units behind homes, and really look at how we could provide some financing and some incentives to very quickly create a stock of very affordable housing by providing homeowners with some tools around the use of the ADUs.
Thank you.
So the bills that you mentioned really addressed protection for tenants. We have tenant protections that passed this year. We had some work done on production. There really wasn't a lot done on preservation, although SB 330 did include a preservation component, which required, requires not destroying any existing affordable homes. So I think we really have to get back to the production aspect of it. I think the state has set the stage. We just talked about SB 50. I think there's probably a few other proposals that we could think about. I've talked about a couple of times now the importance of the state providing funding for production. And so if I think about the different levels of homes that need to be built, the different levels of multifamily homes that need to be built, then I, then we need to work with the state, or hopefully, I will be part of that, providing funding for local entities to do the work they need to do to build and preserve existing, build new affordable housing, build new market-rate housing, and preserve and protect existing affordable housing.
Okay. So this next round, for folks who were here in the first part, learned about the fire round. I don't know if you were all here for the fire round. We didn't know exactly why it's called the fire round, but it's hot and fast. And you're supposed to be, okay, rapid fire.
Rapid fire.
Supposed to be answered in a couple words, if possible, and we do a little practice round, and we'll do it, we'll start with you, and we're just going to keep, we don't have time to rotate. This is quick. The first one is, what's your favorite ice cream?
Americone Dream, Ben &amp; Jerry's.
Lemon chiffon.
Well, I love saffron ice cream from Rick's, but I also love the ube ice cream up in Burlingame, so I'm into exotic flavors.
Okay, and what's the best place to get coffee?
Best place to get coffee in anywhere? So I'll say Redwood City. The best place to get coffee is Ciclismo, which is a bike-oriented coffee place.
You understand how hard that is for a local politician to pick a coffee spot?
Right. It is limited to San Jose, it was kind of like, I think we're the run crowd.
I know, you didn't say, you didn't say San Jose, so I was like, all right.
I am just guaranteed to lose votes on this, I just want you to know. So I personally like Cafe House in San Mateo, and now everyone in Burlingame is.
Outside of Burlingame.
Yeah, I know.
Any Phil's Coffee anywhere. Phil's is it.
Okay, and another easy one, and then the next one is a little harder, but I'll keep you to the second there. What was the last transit trip you took?
Well, when I used to live next to Caltrain, it was a trip to the city. But now, since I don't live near Caltrain, I ride my bike a lot.
Bart to San Francisco for a birthday dinner.
Caltrain to Millbrae, and Bart from Millbrae to SF.
All right. This one is, question is amending the state's constitution to lower the two-thirds voter threshold required to approve revenue measures for affordable housing to a 55% supermajority. Yay or nay?
Yes.
Yay.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, that was fast. This one may be a little harder.
Did you ask to say more?
Awesome, awesome. Efforts to reform Proposition 13 to have a split-roll tax, which would generate billions through increased commercial property taxes.
Are we still on the fire round?
Yeah.
I 100% support the reform of the corporate property tax loophole.
Yes.
Absolutely. November 2020, we all have to support it.
Okay, and bringing back redevelopment, yay or nay?
Yes.
Yes.
That's it.
Sorry, let me just amend that. The old redevelopment required blight. I don't think we should require blight.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, with changes, okay.
Yeah, there were a lot of, a lot of games around the blight question the last time around, and there was legislation on bringing back redevelopment, and it sank like a stone. Because taking money away from the schools to put it into other things is just not the right thing to do right now.
Okay, we got to go back to practice because this has to be a little faster, so it's, if you.
We're apparently very slow learners.
One more practice round. If you had a superpower, what would it be?
Being able to read minds.
Oh, I would love to fly.
I'm kicking really well with this boot, so that could be it.
All right, kicking. Streamlining CEQA requirements to remove barriers to housing production, yay or nay?
Yes, I have some specific proposals, but I won't talk about them now.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm not in favor of wholesale realignment of CEQA. I'm not in favor of standing in to block anyone's access to the courts.
Okay, and this is the last fire question. Increased funding for tenants' legal counsel at the state level, yay or nay?
Yes.
Sure.
Absolutely. Only 22% of people who need a lawyer who are low-income can get one.
Okay, it only looks like we've got one audience question. Does anyone else have a question after this one? All right, people want to go home. And I think we are starting with Assemblymember Lieber. Correct me if I'm wrong, and the question is, how will you hold local cities that have added jobs without adding housing accountable? And how will you work to desegregate our region?
Yeah, I think the, the real way to hold the cities accountable is through their general plans to ensure that they're planning for the density and the kinds of housing that we need. That's why I carried legislation in the state assembly to require that the cities address in the general plan what their plan was for extremely low-income housing. And I think we need to be very directive in what we're trying to get in terms of that. And then I also think that that's one of the issues coming forward with SB 50 that many different organizations have addressed, that SB 50 could have a disruptive impact on communities of color in California. And it's something that we really need to keep an eye on with the voracious level of gentrification that we're seeing.
Can you read me the question again?
I was thinking about SB 50 and displacement.
We're talking about holding local cities that have added jobs without housing accountable and desegregation.
Yeah. Well, in addition to that, we need to be looking at making sure that cities meet their RENA numbers and enhanced, enhanced, let's say, incentives for meeting your RENA numbers at all affordability levels. And we are, we're entering a new RENA cycle, so in case there's anybody in this room who doesn't know what a RENA number is, regional housing needs allocation, each region gets one. How it's divided up is different in different regions, but, but cities must be meeting their, their goals. And Governor Newsom had proposed taking away transit funding. I don't support that, but we do need to consider how we're going to, how we're going to move that forward. And then on the desegregation piece, one of the things we've done in Redwood City is create a 20% inclusionary requirement on all new multifamily homes. So when you're building affordable housing in with market-rate housing, then you're starting to desegregate your communities.
So I agree. I think ultimately, making sure we have affordable housing stock is one of the best ways to make sure we have communities that address all socioeconomic points on the, on the scale. So that's what we need to do. When we upgraded our general plan to allow for mixed use in a formerly industrial area, that 20% increase, we insisted on inclusionary housing. That by its definition is going to bring different income levels together in one building. In the Affordable Housing Project that we're breaking ground on next week, of the 132 units of affordable housing, 82 of them will be for people who make 50% of area median income or less. So I'm very proud of that. The reality is, the deepest affordable housing is going to be built on public land, because if we insist on too much affordable housing on private land, then nothing happens. And that, that actually frustrates everybody's goals. So we need to lean into public land and making sure we get affordable housing that way. In terms of integration or desegregation, the more we can make sure we stay accessible to everybody, the more integrated we will be.
Okay, well, you're not off the hook yet, because we now have five questions from the audience.
Good job with the solicitation, though.
Yeah, thank you. And, okay, sorry, I'm going to need to put my glasses on here. We're starting with Councilmember Mazur. Governor Newsom vetoed SB 5, Affordable Housing and Community Development Investment Program. Bill, do you agree with his decision?
You know, I found SB 5 to be one of the hardest bills to make a decision on this year. I sort of went back and forth depending on how I was thinking about it. If I put on my school board member hat, I was not in support of it. If I put on my city council member hat, I did support it. I think it needed a little bit more work to really clarify that schools were not going to lose money with that, with that new structure that was proposed with Senator Bell's bill. If we can clarify that, I obviously have made it pretty clear that I support new ways of financing housing in our local communities. And so I think it was a great attempt, but it needed some additional refinement before, before it was ready.
So I haven't read the governor's rationale for vetoing it, so I can't really comment on, on why he did. I do think we need as many tools, financial tools, as we can get to make sure we get the development that we all want. I will share, and it was to an earlier question, the point about how do you discourage cities from over-investing in commercial real estate? And I realize I wanted to make a point on that, which is, one, I think collectively, we can raise commercial impact fees, and that changes the marginal cost of commercial versus housing. I was distressed when a project came to us, six floors, four of them commercial, only two housing. And that's because the guy says, right now, I make more money on commercial. So I think we can toggle that with, through commercial impact fees. And then the other thing, and this would be wildly controversial, but for those cities that create much more, many more jobs, much more commercial real estate than housing, we could look at the incremental tax revenue that that creates from property tax and say, you need to share a portion of that with your brethren and sister cities who are producing more housing than jobs. And we could see a disincentive to produce so much commercial that way.
Well, Senator Bell is a truly great author, but there is just no way that I would have supported this bill to take money away from education in our state when we need to get out of the bottom five and get into the top five, no matter what. And Delane Easton, our former superintendent of instruction, who has endorsed my candidacy, had a really good quote saying that, you know, budgets really are a statement of our values, and if we're going to value education as a number-one tool to move our state forward, then we have to keep the money in education. And we should look to the strategies that we already have to provide more, more money and more control in terms of moving towards housing. And I would personally love to see new money in the process. I'm proposing a transfer tax on the sale of luxury homes in California to go to funding affordable housing. And it's those kind of strategies that we need to look at, but not taking money from education.
Thank you. Our next audience question, and this starts with Councilmember Brownrigg. What is your prediction for the California economy in the next 10 years, especially housing?
Well, listen, if I could answer that question, I could self-finance my campaign. So I wish I knew. I do think that we are headed for a downturn. It's inevitable, nobody's repealed the business cycle. We are at the 10th year of the longest bull market ever. I think there are a lot of legislators, quite honestly, who've gotten a little bit lazy, assuming that next year's revenue will be higher than this year's. I remember the 2009 recession. I was voted in, in the 2009 recession, when our city was talking about outsourcing police, outsourcing fire, closing a branch library because of the budget cuts. I'm proud that we were able to restructure, working with our labor groups, push out raises. We were able to use philanthropy to help fund the branch library, so we didn't go through any of those cuts. But I know what that's like. And so I would like to get our state on a more stable economic footing so we don't have these big boom and bust cycles. But to answer the more specific question, I think we're in for a downturn, and then we'll keep growing, because the state of California is an amazing place.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, and I've, just through my bad luck, I've hit two pretty good downturns, one when I was on city council. And thankfully, I had proposed, and our council had approved, a pretty high percentage of reserve funds for a rainy day. Well, that rainy day got there in a big way, and we were able to use those reserves to carry us through. And then in the state legislature, where on day one of my three terms there, we had the largest budget shortfall of any state in U.S. history. And going through that and seeing the kinds of horrific cuts that we had to make to get through it really scared me a lot. And so I am all about diversifying our budget, diversifying our sources of income, asking our billionaires in California to do more. I think that we should have a wealth tax on the unearned income of California's billionaires to go to ameliorating childhood poverty in our state. And it's those kinds of strategies that we have to have the courage to pursue, because it cannot all be on the backs of middle-income Californians. And I think that that's what's going to move us forward.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to make any economic predictions that my colleagues haven't made. I will say, as a school board member, I served during the recession and unfortunately gained a lot of experience in trying to balance a really challenging budget. When the state was making significant cuts to school districts in particular, Redwood City had to cut 20% of its, of its budget just to remain fiscally solvent. So I think to the point of stabilizing the state's budget, many of you already know this because you're very politically involved, but, you know, the state relies on personal income tax and capital gains tax. That is why, as soon as we hit a recession, we go down like that. So back to the earlier question about the Schools and Communities First Initiative, which would close the corporate property tax loophole, help stabilize our state budget, those are the kinds of actions we need to take in addition to the work that the legislature has already done in creating a rainy day fund, so that we can, so the state can help weather the cycle of economic downturn in the same way local school districts and cities need to do.
Thank you. And starting with Assemblymember Lieber, would you support additional state financing for affordable housing, and how would you fund it? If you've already answered this in a previous question, you can maybe, you don't have to take your full one minute.
Yeah, absolutely. I would support that. And as I mentioned, the ADUs, I think, are a great place to add some, some financing to. The voters have been very generous in terms of the housing bonds moving forward, and we will have more housing bonds coming up in the coming years. And I think that the state really has to be a player here. And despite that, we need to get new money into the system as well, because a lot of the local cities are in the position where maybe there's land available, that they could do more through a land bank or what have you, but they maybe have some federal McKinney Act funds, they have a nonprofit developer who's ready to go and has a certain amount of money, and there's a gap. And that gap needs to be filled with some new money that's in the system. And we need to produce more housing at all levels, including supportive housing, including housing for people with disabilities in California, including senior housing that we're going to be short on going forward in our state. So I absolutely support a greater role for the state in financing.
Well, I feel like that's been the theme of what I've talked about, so I'm going to just say yes. But the second part of that question, I think, is really important, which is, how would you do it? And so, you know, the state, as we just talked about, has its rainy day funds. It also has an additional set of surplus funds that can use for one-time expenses. This is the kind of thing that can be considered a one-time expense, to create a fund to support local communities to develop housing. It's not an ongoing commitment, ongoing services that we do need to make to our communities for a variety of different issues, healthcare, early childhood, education, et cetera. But using its one-time funds to create different pots of money to support housing to be built at all affordability levels, I think, is the way the state needs to be going.
So I am concerned that there are enormous calls on our state's resources, and I support split-roll, but I also think we have to be careful to use public resources, which are precious, as best as possible. So yes, I think we ought to finance affordable housing, but I actually think, first of all, that where that money should go is to help buy down affordability in the private developments. In other words, some of our cities have 10% or 15% affordable. have 10% or 15% affordable. But with state subsidy, we could buy that number down to 20% or 25%. That would be a better way to go. But what I'd really like to do is think about ways to structure the capital into the private developer whereby, over time, the money could come back to the state. Not everything has to be a grant. We could, for example, take a share of the equity in the building. And when it gets sold in the future, that share could come back to the state and refinance this fund so that it's evergreen, so that we're not choosing between affordable housing and schools.
All right. And starting with Councilmember Mazur. With current tenants facing displacement across the state, what steps would you take to protect tenants while we wait for new housing to be built?
Well, I, the governor just signed AB 1482, which prevents rent gouging, requires just cause evictions. And, and so we have put the tenant protections in place across the state that cities have been working on before. Some cities, yes, and some cities, no. I think, you know, the challenge when you initiate new legislation like this is the timing. Right? And so what, what the concern, I think, we're hearing now from communities is, are landlords increasing rent in anticipation of the implementation of this legislation? Now, for those of you who watch the legislation, you know that it prevents rent increases back to March of 2019. So that should have been resolved. So I think the big challenge for the state going forward, now that this bill has been passed, is enforcement. What's gonna happen? Who's gonna be holding landlords accountable to be following the state law? I don't know. I haven't seen the infrastructure for that yet.
So, so ultimately, I think the best long-run protection for tenants is to build more housing. And that then reduces this enormous pressure on demand. And so we, so that really is the best long-run solution. I agree that the current legislation will make sure we don't get rent spikes. I also talked earlier about creating a fund to help nonprofits buy de facto affordable buildings. Because if we could shift 10% to 15% of the multifamily housing stock into nonprofit ownership hands, then you know forever those buildings will stay affordable because they don't have a profit motive that drives them to profit-maximize. At the end of the day, it's the profit motive that creates a lot of the problems. So if we can change the nature of ownership, that can change the way we look at the future forever without legislation of rent increases.
I think that this question really pinpoints where people are vulnerable right now. And there are a number of activists up and down the peninsula, including Faith in Action Bay Area and many others, that are going to our local city councils to ask for temporary urgency ordinances to cover the community until the bill comes into effect. And I know that they went to Redwood City. And they're going to many cities throughout our area. And this is a great time for this question to come up because we have two local elected officials right here who can take action on the urgency ordinances that are needed to protect the community from eviction specifically. And there's a lot more information. If you look at resources like the Evictions Map Tool that's online, you see what a real plague of evictions looks like in the Bay Area. And so we do need action now.
Thank you. Last question, then we'll go to the one-minute closing statement. And this one is first to Councilmember Brownrig. With SB 50, many long-term homeowners are worried that they will be ultimately displaced or the very nature of their neighborhoods will be impacted. How will you protect long-term homeowners?
So I'm not gonna protect long-term homeowners. What I'm gonna try to protect is single-family home neighborhoods. I don't believe single-family home neighborhoods are the root of the problem. I think the root of the problem is that we don't have enough housing. And there is plenty of room, in my judgment, in commercial areas, in light industrial areas, and elsewhere to build that housing without simply insisting that single-family home neighborhoods all of a sudden have five-story buildings in them. Moreover, I'll share with you that I think the number of units that would actually get built that way would be very few. Because when you add up the price of land in many of our cities, and then you add up the price of construction, you will be at $1.25 to $1.50 million per door. And I just don't think that's very affordable. And that's what'll happen if you force people to build only in residential areas because the residential land is the most expensive. So for many reasons, I don't think this attack on single-family home neighborhoods is the right approach.
Well, I, I think that there's a great deal that we can do to protect the, the single-family home homeowners, including the homeowners in the mobile home park who own their home but, but rent their space. And I think that we have to do everything in our power to help them. When you look at the financial abuse, particularly of seniors, and how quickly someone can lose their home to back taxes or, or an auction of their home when they weren't really fully aware, we need to strengthen the financial abuse teams that are at the county level. And the misinformation that's going to be flowing to the owners of single-family homes in this year before the Schools and Communities First Initiative to change Prop 13 is on the ballot in November 2020 is gonna be unprecedented. It has already started, mailings have already started, giving out misinformation to people who read it in good faith. And I think it's incumbent on all of us to pull together our organizations to really get the good information out there and to make sure that people are protected with the largest asset in their lives.
So a few weeks ago, I took a tour of downtown Palo Alto. And it was called the Forbidden Homes Tour. And what we saw were small multifamily homes that fit very well into the neighborhood. They were built duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, some a little bit bigger. But they were built in a style that fit the neighborhood. And they were built in, with, mixed in with single-family homes. SB 50, I think, is really important because I've had this question before. SB 50 does not require a five-story building in the middle of a single-family neighborhood that is nowhere near transit. The change, the way that it worked was only for triplexes, duplexes, and fourplexes within 15% of the envelope of the original home. And so if we think about, how do we wanna make sure that our neighborhoods look the way they currently look? Then we think about, how do we design small multifamily homes to fit the communities that they're in? I just have one additional thing I wanna say on that. I think it's also really important to understand that the history of housing policy has created the segregation that we talked about earlier, the way that single-family home neighborhoods were built. And the racism behind a lot of that housing policy is rarely talked about. And so I think a lot of these questions were part of that. But we didn't talk specifically about that. So I just wanted to sort of end on that note.
All right. And now our candidates have their closing statements.